A minute warning today, we were able to get right into this. And we welcome our guests. Little unclear on why people didn't dress up. This is something we always do for our board meetings. And we're not sure why everyone didn't get the memo. Actually, after all these decades, Anna and I decided we're finally going to get married. We thought it was...[22.14][22.14](laughter)[23.14][23.14](laughter) And on a board day. What better time to... At lunch, we'll have a little ceremony in here. No, actually, I agreed to... There's a women's caring program that really provides financial support to children. You're probably familiar with it. And I've been asked to be a bartender at that event tonight. And it's immediately, assuming we get done kind of on time, if not, I'll be leaving, with my corkscrew. So, realized I didn't have time in between. Sorry if it creates any tension.
What's the real...
That is a real story.[67.81][67.81](laughter) The real story is not getting married finally. It's the women's caring program and...
So you have the education...
Oh, you do? Are you going? Are you going?
Yeah. Well, now you have to go.
Huh?
Now you have to go.
Yeah. Well, I'm going, one way or the other, but it would be good to see you there. This doesn't replace the 126 million that I think the legislature, the governor, and the rest of us should look for in new money for four-year-olds on that early education issue. We just don't... We haven't filled the slots, and we hope we could come up with that kind of money in our budget to take care of that. So this isn't to replace that. This is kind of for financial support to children from low-income families, for childcare in particular. So, yeah, anyone... I'm sure you can go last minute if you haven't yet, and we can make that... I don't even know where I'm going, actually, but we can make that available to you. I guess I was supposed to actually call the board meeting to order first, and the time is now 9:40, and a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Ed meeting of August 14 is called to order. And approval of agenda and order of priority is the first item. Are there any changes?
I move approval with the addition under discussion after item J of the potential draft resolution on the accreditation legislation for further discussion and potential action.
Did you move with that, John?
Yeah.
That was moved? Any support? Supported by Nancy? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Great. Thank you very much. And Merz, I know you do introduction to board members at this time.
Good morning. I'd like to introduce to you the people around the table. To my immediate left is Mike Flanagan. He's the chairman of the board and the state superintendent of public instruction. To his left, as we go around the table, John Austin is the board's president. John resides in Ann Arbor. Then Cassandra Albrecht, the board's vice president from Rochester Hills. Nancy Danhoff, the board secretary from East Lansing. And then Kathleen Strauss from Detroit. Next to Kathleen, next month, you will see the pretty newly-selected Michigan Teacher of the Year Bobby Joe Kenyon from Grand Rapids Public Schools. She had a commitment in her district today, so was not able to join us, but you will see her next month. And across the table is Eileen Wiser. She's from Ann Arbor. Dan Varner from Detroit. Richard Zilee from Dearborn, and he is the board's NASB delegate. And Miriam McGuire, the board's treasurer from Detroit. Thank you.
Thanks, Merz. I think we were going to show a short clip just to kick the meeting off. It's been two months. We missed you. And it's been an eventful summer, especially the last 10 days or so. You can see with the Supreme Court weighing in, had impacts on us. But this was more a little bit on a lighter note.
Our first organization interview will be with Excellent Schools Detroit CEO Dan Varner. Dan, welcome to American Graduate.
Thank you. It's great to be here.
In just two years, your organization has worked very hard doing amazing things on its 90-90-90 plan. Can you tell our viewers about that?
You bet. So the 90-90-90 goal for the organization is to ensure that every Detroit student is in a school that is, whether on track to graduate, 90% of their students on time, enroll 90% of those kids in a quality post-secondary program, and have 90% of those enrollees ready to succeed in that program without remediation. And so, our coalition partners, because Excellent Schools Detroit really is a coalition of organizations, many of whom are here today, have been working tirelessly over the last two years in order to achieve some of that work, restarted a number of high schools, started new high schools, have worked around talent development issues to create a school leaders academy, and new teacher residency and induction programs, and many, many other things, in order to ensure great academic outcomes for kids.
How many students does your program touch?
Well, so we work with every district, every school. Our coalition really is governance-neutral, so we work with every school, whether it's a DPS school, a charter school, a private school. So literally, the 150,000 school-age children that Detroit produces and has every year are the students that we work with.
And what needs to happen in this coming school year to help you towards your goal of 90-90-90?
I would say the most important thing, probably two things that really need to happen. One is, and these are really two of the three things that we do as an organization. One is to make sure that all of the institutional actors remain organized, kind of coherent and organized, and aligned around achieving one goal. And then the second is for the Detroit community, really to rise up, all of us together, and demand and support quality educational outcomes for kids.
And here's a yes or no question. Can we do it in Detroit?
You bet we can. Absolutely.
I love that. I do want to ask you a question that I'm going to ask everybody tonight. How soon?
Our goal is to achieve that 90-90-90 by 2020. That is frankly a, very much a stretch goal when you look at other cities and how quickly they've been able to improve educational outcomes for kids. But I remain convinced, so I'm a little bit of an optimist, I suppose, but I remain convinced that we'll have Time Magazine back in 2020 to do a new story about Detroit as the comeback city of the decade. And one of the big articles in that issue will be about how Detroit got its educational outcomes to the 90-90-90 benchmark. We absolutely can do it by 2020.
And in that article, what is your title going to be?
Just one of many. One of many folks who worked hard to make a difference.
That's what it takes. Thank you so much, Dan, for being here.
I thought worth showing.[433.03][433.03](applause) And I think particularly with some of the stuff going on, Dan's one of the clear, stable voices that I think the community needs at this time. No matter what the governance ends up being, this is something courts and others will decide appropriately. But appreciate those comments, Dan, and we're very proud to be associated with you. Our first item on the committee of the whole agenda is a presentation on the impact of new elementary and secondary ed flexibility. It... Board had briefings on this, but we thought, now that it's in its final form, and we've had... Come on up to the table, folks. As you know, it was approved by the Department of Ed in July. The implementation of the waiver package is impacting many offices in the department. I think that's probably something we may be, even weren't as clear on in our own mind when we talked to the board twice about this. And it's been quite an effort, and I just want to say upfront that particularly the four people and their teams that are sitting in front of us right now did an amazing job, not only to get the flexibility approved, but then to really rush for two weeks to try to position our school districts and schools so they could benefit from it. I'm going to turn this over to Sally at this point.
So, thank you at that. And some of what we're going to present, you have heard pieces of it at previous board meetings when we went over what we had originally submitted. There are not significant changes between what was originally submitted. I think we've shared a couple of things that we negotiated differently with the USCD, particularly had to do with graduation rates and the extent to which that they weighed into our system. But we are very pleased to have reached this point, and like I said, we're going to walk you through and just make sure that you've got a clear understanding of what's actually in the approved flexibility request. So I'm going to kick this off with... Linda? Okay.
This is an overview, just a big overview for all of the various pieces. Obviously, each one of these components have lots of details, and we won't get into many of those today. But just to take you through the basics in a reminder, the opportunity presented itself for us to set in a set of waivers to the four districts, not to have to comply with the existing NCOB language, but an opportunity to change that. Our submission, the first submission went in February 28. We then were engaged in making revisions through April until July, and we had final approval July 19 of this year for our waiver. And that then, as Sally pointed out, put us into a position of really rushing to make sure we had everything in place so that schools could get as much advance notice as possible about the new situations. There are three basic principles to the flexibility waiver. Career and college ready, expectations for all students, state-developed differentiated recognition, accountability, and support for schools, and supporting effective instruction and leadership. Those are the three basic principles in the waiver. The first one, principle one, career and college ready, expectation for all students. What we had to negotiate was the implementation timeline for social studies assessments for students with disabilities, and supports for subgroups primarily English-language learners. So as we were going through the conversations with the United States Department of Education, those were some issues that they wanted to see us address more clearly, and we provided information to them on those issues. Principle two, which is the differentiated accountability and supports, they wanted to see more weight for our graduation rate in the scorecard, so we went through a process to put that in. We had to demonstrate to the Department of Education that our metrics aligned with their definitions. And finally, we had to bring more clarity and detail on the supports to schools. Educator evaluations was the third principle. And the chief negotiation points there were aligning our federal requirements and timelines with the state educator evaluation laws. And the key drivers in Michigan, as you know, are the Michigan Council for Educational Effectiveness and the Michigan Legislature. And so we had to work our way through those two key drivers and the pieces that USED wanted to see. So, now we got it all negotiated. It's all going, and now what? Implementation plan, first for career and college ready. The big piece there is to get the standards in place and have teachers educating against those standards, and then have them ready for assessments. And so, our first step was to translate those standards into action. We did that first by developing crosswalks with grade level and high school content expectations, and that is done. We are in a current collaboration with MAISA, the Michigan Association of Intermediate School Administrators, to develop high-quality, aligned units of instruction. And some of those are finished and out at this point and available to educators, and I provided here the two websites where people can go to get those materials. Richard?
I'm not sure I understand what a crosswalk is.
You take our existing content standards that we had, the high school and grade-level content expectations, and you take the standards that were put together with the common, with the career and college ready standards. You say, where do they match up, and where are there differences? We were very fortunate in that they mostly matched.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. So, many of the units are in development now. Some are already available, and we'll be doing that for both English Language Arts and Math. We're turning to the ISDs for this work because they have a lot of staff available to do it, and very qualified people in content. And as we've taken a look at what we're doing, as you'll see in a few minutes, we're going to change our focus here inside the department, and so this is helping us to get that work done with qualified staff across the state, close at the elbow of the schools, and allow us to change our focus a little bit.
Linda, can I just mention, this probably is a time for a shout-out for the ISDs. I think because they don't have a direct relationship with citizens, they're often, or most of them don't, they're often thinking that it's just some other bureaucracy. They'd be... They're essential on so many things, but this is a great example. And that's why we've had the darkening of the dotted lines, and I think it just served this whole process well for the 4,000 schools.
Big help to us. They're making a major difference in our ability to connect locally.
Of the career and college ready standards, the Core course, the Common Core?
Career and college ready standards are also referred to as the college and career... I'm sorry.
Common Core.
The content standards, Common Core. They're not...
I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, we tend to call them the career and college ready because that is what they are. Common Core, people don't know what that necessarily means, so we thought it sounded that it's more clear if you say career and college ready standards.
Can I clarify one thing?
Please, ma'am.
My understanding is that the only college and career and college ready standards right now for Common Core are English Language Arts and Math.
Correct.
We don't have them for other subjects.
Correct. That's correct. Yep. That's correct. Translating the standards into action to continue, we've already held statewide rollouts on those standards. We began that in the 2010-11 school year, but that was focused primarily on administrators. We're really excited about a series we are going to be kicking off this fall in collaboration with the MEA, AFT Michigan, MASSP, and MEMSBA. And it's a two-year series of webinars designed for teachers and for building administrators. And that's to help them understand both what those classroom units might look like, as well as what some of the test items might be. We're hoping to get teachers a clearer idea of what the rigor is related to our new standards because that is the bigger change for everybody, is the level of rigor that's required. And then finally, we need to integrate the content across the curricular... I'm sorry. We're going to take a look at instruction, focus more on that, and in looking at that instruction, we're changing the focus in our curriculum and instruction unit to have people who are prepared to provide help in the field with an integration of content across curricular areas. So you not only are teaching English Language Arts, but you can do that in science. You can do that in social studies. And so we'll integrate some of the lessons. Literacy across the curriculum, once again, that it's not just the English Language Arts teacher or the reading teacher's responsibility. Literacy is applicable to all content areas. Intervention strategies, so now somebody's not getting it so well, what are we going to do to intervene in their learning and help them? And then, education of low socioeconomic students, this seems to be an area where we have a lack of achievement, and we want to help teachers understand, how do you deal with the issues that these kids bring to the classroom that are very real for them? Just a reminder that the Michigan Merit Curriculum is state law and remains in place. The career and college ready standards replace high school content expectations and grade-level content expectations... Whoops. Hit a button. In mathematics and English Language Arts only. The Michigan Merit Curriculum course descriptions for English Language Arts and Math have been updated to reflect the language of the CCR. With assessment, and we've agreed that I'm just going to talk about this slide because Joseph's got a big presentation for you in the next one. So, we belong to two consortia that will help us assess whether or not the career and college ready standards are in place. One of them is the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium, which will provide summative assessments for grades K-12 for general education students. And then finally, we also are part of the Dynamic Learning Maps Consortium, which provides summative assessments for students with significant cognitive disabilities. And Joseph and Vanessa and their team will lay out a more detailed presentation later on this morning. So, that was how we're going to get standards in place. Now we need to change over to priority, focus, and reward schools, which is the differentiated work that we're going to be doing for priority, which we have already begun the implementation. Focus has already begun. AYP status will begin next year this time. Because of the changes that we had to make in our cut scores and our expectations and the things that we agreed to do with AYP status, that one has been delayed for one year. So we have a transition into that. And then our reward schools have already begun. So what do differentiated supports look like? With our newly redesigned system of support, we must, according to our application, address unique needs of all schools. And they are different across the state. We need, and we've discovered this with our work with both the State Reform Office and with our work with school improvement grants, we need to build the capacity at the district and the school levels. The district level, we note particularly that there are issues. We need to move schools rapidly from low achievement to high achievement. It has been for some time, the notion that this is done slowly, and now we know that we need to go faster and do it more rapidly. And so we need to look at three-year turnarounds instead of five-to-eight-year turnarounds. Most importantly, to close the achievement gap. Priority schools, the good news here is that we have finally been able to align the work we've been doing with persistently lowest-achieving schools and the State Reform Office with Deb's work and the school improvement grants along with this work. So now we'll end up with one plan for all of these schools. They do have to choose a reform model, either transition, transformation, restart, or closure. You'll recall from the work that Deb's done that mostly our schools line up with transition and transformation. So priority schools, what kinds of supports do they get? A Title I school will receive support of an intervention specialist for up to 50 days each year. An intervention specialist will focus at the district level, but they will also be working with the buildings in order to close the gap between what student's achievement has been and where they will be. Our first task for them is to diagnose issues, adjust instruction, and then change district systems. We find that frequently, the systems are not in place. For instance, teachers may not be in place until March of a school year. It's kind of hard to hit an achievement target when you don't have staff in place. Procurement, the books aren't there, the whiteboards aren't there, things aren't in place for schools. And so we'll be working with that. These trained intervention specialists began visits this week in the named districts, and we'll be across... We will have covered all the districts by the end of next week with an initial visit to them about what's expected and what we can provide in supports. There are eight buildings that are not Title I buildings that are in the priority schools list, and so we will be working with them, but they will not be able to receive this support directly unless they would like to purchase it, and they can use their Title II funds to do that. Priority schools, the intervention specialist supports will help them with a selection of a reform model based on the data from an intense three-day data workshop. One of the things that we learned in the first two rounds of the school improvement grant and with the State Reform Officer is that schools frequently make a decision about the model they're going to use not based on data, but based on a gut-level reaction or what's in the best interest of our district. And so we're going to take them through a very intense three-day workshop in order to make the decision about which reform model they might want to utilize and which will best fit the needs of their school district and their students. We're also going to ask them to complete a survey of an active curriculum, and this is another point where Mike pointed to the ISDs. They have already been trained in order to help the schools with a survey of an active curriculum. That's a check on what's actually going on in the building and in the classroom versus what people think ought to be going on. So it's a comparison against what you need in place in order to meet the standards versus what teachers are doing. And then it helps the teachers to adjust their curriculum against that. We'll be doing that in English Language Arts and Math classrooms. We'll help them with the development of their school's reform plan along with the school reform office. There is an alignment of that reform plan to their school improvement plan so that we're only working on one plan, not three, or five, or two, or whatever. And we'll take a review, we'll do a review of the district-level policies to align student achievement. Other supports will include ISD supports, again, with coaches and other needs that they may identify. And we will also, these schools will utilize the new Advanced Ed website, and they'll be the first ones to use the new assist platform. So that's the priority schools in general. Focus schools.
We still have to pick one on the school plan.
Yes, ma'am.
First, if we can come up with another one.
No, there are four models that they can select from. That's both in state guidance, or federal guidance and state law. And so we're trying to keep them in those four models, at least to be more concise about what they're going to do. There may be other options, but the research isn't there yet to move it along or the law.
Richard, please. Yes, sir.
I want to ask, what are the qualifications to be interventions specialists?
They have to have a background in coaching. They have to have a background in administration. They have endured, every last one of them, a four-hour interview process that included, first of all, getting a set of data and being able then to respond to what the issues were within that data. They are going through a series of trainings in addition, and they tend to be folks who have a history and education in, not necessarily successful schools, but in schools where turnaround has happened, movement has happened, where there have been a lot of challenges as well. So they've had to struggle some, is what I'm trying to say there.
Where are they getting these intervention specialists?
We have announced that across the state, and in fact, we've gone outside of the state in order to find them. We've advertised through MSU because they're our contractor for this work, and they've come to us across the state, from across the state primarily. I don't think we have hired anybody from out-of-state yet. We did have several out-of-state applicants.
Kathy, please.
So will they hire MSU?
Yes.
Sure?
We don't have the FTE ability to hire here.
Well, that's what I wondered. How would this happen?
Through MSU. They're one of our partners, and they have our school improvement grant funds to do this.
Roughly, how many are there?
We will need, there are currently 74 have been hired. We need another 30, 35. So there's another round. If you know people who are really well-qualified at this kind of work, please.
Richard, our application is still open.[1512.71][1512.71](laughter) Eileen, please.
Paul Stemmer, our NAEP coordinator, gave a presentation at the Council Chief State School Officers Conference on the National Conference on Student Assessment in June. And he was part of a panel that showed how NAEP background questions could be used to mesh what teachers say they do in the classroom and what kids say is happening. The one thing that I would, having watched two states take those student responses and teacher responses on classroom practice and reading to heart... Now, remember, NAEP is only a sampling, so you can't go back to a specific school on this and say, you have to correct this. But they took it to heart and analyzed it, and then when they went into the classroom, looked for whether or not the kids were right or the teachers were right, and it turned out the kids were right. So the teachers changed their practice, and they started seeing higher assessment. In Michigan, one of the questions that was raised was about integrate and interpret in reading, because even though people are saying they're doing it, our test scores on NAEP don't show that there's comprehension and lower grades. So I hate to charge Joseph with any more, but at least I'm doing it at a board meeting.[1591.11][1591.11](laughter) And I would ask whether there's any way to do a quick sift through the NAEP data, the background questions, to see if there's warning flags that we can direct our in-school assistance providers to look for, because that might really help them focus very quickly on issues that might have a pretty good yield for student success. Thanks.
Good suggestion. For Joseph.
By the way, at the interviews, I went over to speak to a small group at the Radisson and accidentally walked in the wrong room, and it was where one of the interview sessions were going on, and they kind of went, are you changing jobs?[1630.71][1630.71](laughter) And it was, they were round-robin, it looked like. Did they go to different... It really was an intensive, as you say, four-hour, but also with multiple groups. So I'm pretty...
They had to interview with various people, and they had to present various cases at those various stations around the room.
Cool.
So now for the focus schools, you'll recall that there are over 300 of them, and we can't possibly have enough intervention specialists to help us there, and so we are going to focus our work at the district level. And we are hiring, among those hired are the district intervention facilitators as well. And so we've got two groups being trained. These folks, in the first year, will only be spending about 40 hours across the school year in the district. We'll increase that amount of support over subsequent years if improvements are not made. But we anticipate that a lot of the school districts will improve their student achievement and close their gaps once they're aware of the problem. You're not going to find school districts that have a lot of high achievement willing to sit with that kind of an issue, and they'll be making pretty fast recoveries, we suspect. Those that remain, however, in the second, third years, will receive additional supports that will be more closely aligned with those of the priority schools.
And would you prefer people to tell questions or...
I would yield to Mike on that.
Dan, as you see fit, if you think it's a good timing, go ahead, please.
A quick question on this one. Is it, so 40 hours per district across the school year, and is that regardless of the number of focus schools in your district, or if you're a district that has six and another district has one, will the district with six get more attention?
No, they will get 40 hours to start. It'll be the same. And then we'll take a look at the individual needs as they move forward. Once again, we'll be looking at database decisions. Frequently, there's not been enough focus on what the student gap is and what the issues are, and we'll look to them to make database decisions. We're going to look to them to build a multi-tiered system of support such as response to intervention in the district, and we're going to ask them, as well as, we will also provide a strong monitoring component. How are they coming along? What progress are they making?
You know, I might just mention, I ran into a lot of folks, and maybe you have also, that I think because of past programs, they were misunderstanding this to be kind of your handful of top achievers and your couple of kids that were really just at the other end. This is the top 30% and the bottom 30%. So I mean, it's almost a third of the kids in each category. And I think as that sunk in... each category, and I think as that sunk in, I even understood it, having been a local soup, that at first, it's kind of like, "Oh, my gosh, what happened here?" And I think as they got through this, just even watching, if I could do this, I guess, say, watching the evolution of quotes and papers over the last couple of weeks, you could see a greater understanding, and then, "Okay, we're up to this, we can do it." Because it wasn't just a handful of kids in the 10,000 school district and a handful here. It's a third and a third. And then, I asked Marty to send out, and he did so, by the way, his, I think you received notice, his mom passed away, why he's not here today. But to send out a couple of things related to that so folks could kind of understand it better. I do want to say, most of the associations did a really good job in prepping folks for months, you know, because we needed to have as part of our application a focus category. If we didn't have a focus category, they were going to be under the gun of the original No Child Left Behind, so in that sense. And most of them did a good job in getting folks kind of ready. But I still think it was okay and understandable that suddenly, you know, you still didn't necessarily anticipate that was going to be your district. So, understanding it and seeing it took a little, but I'm really proud of the folks that kind of, especially after they took a deep breath, said, "This is a problem." And whenever either Ed Trust, or NAEP, or others point out that we're one of the worst in the country for this gap, this is really a strategic way to finally have some elements. The only way you can do it is if the subsets are doing it, you know? So, we may feel kind of bad about it every year, that, geez, how do we rank among the worst in the country on the gap? And it's now finally, I think, getting to a point where folks will deal with it at their local level and are up to it.
So, for the focus schools, the facilitators for that group are being trained. This group will meet in mid-September to begin their work, and the schools will actually be brought together at that point in time. We have held webinars for both focus and priority schools already, a series of them, and two more will be held for focus schools next week. So, that's where we are with focus schools at this point in time. I'm going to turn this down to Vanessa for educator evaluations.
So, as Linda already mentioned, educator evaluations was a unique part of our negotiation with US Ed because Michigan's situation is unique because of our very strong legislation, which put our, the essential consequence was it put our timeline slightly different than what US Ed was expecting to see. So, much of our discussion centered around US Ed was thinking you would do guidelines, then pilot, and we're piloting, then guidelines. So, there was a lot of discussions back and forth on that, but in the end, they were understanding of Michigan's context, and we're moving forward there. So, just to kind of remind everyone and situate us in our timelines, the school year that just concluded and the school year that we're going into, all districts are implementing locally-developed educator evaluation systems with growth as a significant part, and these have to occur annually. In the meantime, the Michigan Council for Educator Effectiveness is working on their recommendations. Joseph is a non-voting member of that council, and those will be coming out, and the legislature will move on those. The timeline that's in law is that by 2013, 14, we will have a statewide evaluation system. And that's what US Ed is looking for as well, is this time when there is some guidelines by which everyone is doing this work. So, that's what we are working toward and are now committed, both on a state level and our federal level, to get to this goal.
And if I could just say, that's an area, I think, where I give a lot of credit to the US Department of Ed, because we weren't in lockstep with theirs. In fact, our two years are actually reversed, as Vanessa was saying, and they wanted to be flexible, so I think that's an indicator, that's a time when they were flexible with what they thought needed to happen, and as long as we were going to have the end goal of having an evaluation system at the same time as they were going to have one, they were fine with it. So, our middle years don't coincide with theirs, but our end year does. So, I give them a lot of credit when they said this was going to be a negotiation and was going to be flexible. I give them a lot of credit for living up to that.
So, the steps that will get us to the statewide evaluation system, and again, these are laid out in law, the Michigan Council for Educator Effectiveness will make their recommendations. This body will receive that report from the Michigan Council. The legislature receives the recommendations, and then they have to take a step to pass necessary laws. And then, the districts will adopt this system or an equivalent. There is some language in the legislation around equivalent systems, and that's part of what the Michigan Council on Educator Effectiveness also has to undertake, is how you deem your system equivalent. But that's kind of our next steps in legislation. ESCEA Flex does require that we have these guidelines for a statewide educator evaluation system, and then they also ask MDE to do a lot of explanation about how we will ensure compliance and how we'll support districts. Again, this put us in a bit of an interesting situation because currently, MDE does not have a strong role in ensuring compliance. We have strong legislation, but MDE's role is different than a lot of other states. But again, US Ed was willing to be flexible with us and understand our unique situation, so that was very helpful. We're entering a pilot year, according to the Michigan Council for Educator Effectiveness recommendations, and after this pilot year, there will be these guidelines. We really, we actually now have to have these guidelines finalized by fall 2013. Again, that's a timeline in law, but now we have the added necessity of our ESCEA flexibility approval rests on meeting these timelines. So, the field has experienced a lot of principle two, the accountability and supports part, because that was what hit them first, but this is the strong second push, I think, as we have to ramp up to meet these deadlines, and we have to keep to our legislative deadlines as well. And then, MDE now has some very quick movement to do our implementation around principles, around the educator evaluations. Again, we've been doing a lot of supports for districts prior to ESCEA flexibility because that's really where the law put us in providing technical assistance and support. But now, US Ed wants to see us, you know, live up to what we told them we were going to do. So, some of those supports for implementation include a resource kit to support the current law and provide best practices. We know, coming out of this first year, we know districts are working very hard on this and are working very hard to develop rigorous systems. There's a lot of collaboration and coordination in the field, there's a lot of best practices, but there's still going to be a divergence in quality and even in what the systems contain because everybody's doing it their own way. So, we want to continue to support our districts as they implement the current law and also encourage use of some of the best tools out there. We will be embarking on a review of our current evaluation systems. This is optional for districts. This is kind of a beating-the-odds sort of concept, but applied to evaluation systems. So, it gives MDE the opportunity to review and comment on the practices of districts in an optional and lower-stakes way, but also gives, we've heard from a lot of districts, they want to know, they're concerned about doing it right. And so, they, hopefully, some districts will see this as an opportunity to get feedback on the hard work that they've been doing for the past couple of years now, well, more years than that, but specifically since the law was passed, it's a couple of years. Increase technical assistance and support, more partnerships with, for instance, we have one that we're working on right now with the Michigan Association of Secondary School Principals and the Michigan Association School Administrators. Okay. Sorry, I should have practiced. To do trainings for principals and work around that. And then, we have our teacher-student data link that was implemented for the first time based on the 10-11 data. We collected a second round of it now. SEPI collected the second round of that, turning that back to districts for optional use, as well as we collected the first round of educator effectiveness labels, again, SEPI collected the first round of educator effectiveness labels, in the Registry of Educational Personnel. So, we'll have some aggregate reports that we can produce about what effectiveness, the distribution of effectiveness, looks like in the state, keeping in mind that it comes from different systems. So, it's a little bit hard to compare across different systems, but it'll give us a good first look.
That wraps up the presentation. Here are the names of the people you can get a hold of.
Thank you, guys. Nancy, then Mary Ann, Dan.
I'm going to go way back to the beginning because I guess I didn't, I wasn't broad enough when I had a question. This whole thing was predicated on the fact that we had new college and career writing standards that we were putting into place, and you made the comment that you submitted initially to the administrative level in districts and buildings. Can you tell me what their response has been to this, how they've looked at this, whether or not they saw the crosswalk as being equal as we have? In other words, that there was more in common than there wasn't in common, or what was your response that you got?
Generally, we saw, we heard from them that they saw the crosswalk as being more in common. Our concern has been that we've not had them see enough of the rigor that's going to be demanded, and so, helping everybody understand the rigor is probably our biggest challenge. We've not heard a lot from school districts about, "Oh, this is way different than anything we've ever had to do before."
Okay. So, here's the reason why I ask. We spent a lot of time, energy, I'm guessing, staff time, money as well, in putting together some really rigorous background materials that people could use for our core content expectations and if there is a good crosswalk, I just realized this is all, sorry, if there is a good crosswalk, I'm hoping then that that will not be, you know, no longer useful, but in fact, it would still be useful, and those best practice possibilities would still be used by schools and teachers. Would you agree with that? Do you think that's true?
Yes. Yes, in general, what we have to do now is take the materials that already existed, which we show a strong crosswalk to, and the materials that are now being put together by MAISA's team, and bring those together. In most cases, MAISA has got a bigger focus on how do we get the rigor embedded, and these items that we did originally didn't have that level of content. And so, bringing them together, this works beautifully, let's use it, but here's some more for you to think about is our task.
I think that one of the big, one big challenge that we will have in local districts is, wait a minute, we spent all this time and energy to do the core content expectations and best practice, and now you're throwing that out for this other, and I just want to assure people that we're not throwing anything out, we're just adding, and I like the way you say that, we're adding that intense rigor that was perhaps missing before, and now will be added. So, thank you for that explanation.
Mary Ann and Dan, Eileen.
Thank you. With regards to the educator evaluation, I was looking for some information on professional development. Is there anything you can tell me that in the works or?
Right. Professional development for teachers?
Right.
Right. So, that's the, if you think about educator evaluations as a cycle, that's the last piece, right? The training and the learning that needs to occur, and our law is clear that the educator evaluations need to result in professional development in areas of weakness. One of the challenges with developing professional development specifically right now is that we're, there is still that step of figuring out what the system's going to look like. So, how are teachers going to be evaluated, and then, how will that produce data that we can use to identify professional development modules? There's a couple of things underway. This is where I would say our associations and our partners are really stepping up in the interim and saying, "Well, this is what," and I neglected to mention MEA is part of that partnership that we're doing as well. I forgot one. Things like, what do people need to know now in the absence of a state system, like metric free evaluation techniques for principals? And what do teachers need to do in terms of creating a professional portfolio or in terms of understanding their outcomes? But again, I would say our associations are carrying a lot of that right now while the department is, in some sense, waiting to understand more about what the system will look like. But we do have an internal work group that's also working on how do we connect this to good professional development, things that are already in place and new things. So, it is, I would still say, you know, still say an area of development, but one that we recognize its importance in the long-term effectiveness of this whole policy.
And Mary Ann, to that, to that point, if I may, that same point, I think it's fortunate that we have so many in the audience today from the Schools of Education for one of our other items, because a lot of this, having a daughter who went through a prestigious school event here, there's still work to be done. And I think maybe there's even, we have among the best teacher prep institutions in the country, there's still work to be done, given the high stakes for teachers in this right now, and it's one reason I think it's appropriate for us to do what we're doing in an item later today, is because the worst of all worlds would be, you're in a program for four or five years, and you're really not ready for this new system, either understanding the core or understanding what the expectations are, and, but I think, again, those folks are up to it.
I just wanted to clarify, are you saying then that teachers will not get any professional development for at least a year?
No. Currently, the law says that that needs to be part of those local evaluation systems, that the results need to result locally in professional development. What will be missing for a while is a really comprehensive standardized approach, I think, statewide, but we know that districts, again, are doing that work and that the associations are supporting them. But we look forward to building together to a more common system as we go.
And I think there's almost two different levels of professional development. One is helping teachers and administrators understand what the evaluation systems are, and then, how do you use them? Because the teachers need to understand that as well as the administrators are going to be conducting them. And then, once you identify areas that you want to work on, then that's another professional development plan. And I just want to say that the professional development policy that you approved a couple of months ago has been something that we've been working with local districts to really help them think about what does professional development have to be? If we really want to help teachers improve their skills, they've got to keep, this idea of going to the workshops is not necessarily the way to help them really transform their skills. It's the professional learning communities where they're really looking at their own students' data. So, that policy has given us a good vehicle to start those kind of conversations in the districts.
Dan and Eileen, please, and Kath.
Three quick questions, and let me echo everybody's thanks for this update. So, there was a quick, early on, mention of not starting AYP status work until 2013. So, really quickly, are the implications of that, if any?
So, this year, and we'll be talking about this in great detail, I think in the next board item, but this year, we ran AYP under the kind of original system. There were a couple modifications made for this year, but we ran what looks like the familiar AYP to people from the last 10 years. In 2013, what we'll transition to is that Accountability Score Card that has the differentiated targets and the color coding and all those things that we talked about in the application review process. So, there really aren't any implications in terms of US Ed. They were happy to accept our AYP statuses for this year and then our scorecard for next year, along with our priority focus reward list this year. I think the big implications in this next year will be getting schools ready to understand a very different way of looking at their proficiency targets and making sure, to your point, that there's good professional learning for schools even before we unveil the scorecard so that it's meaningful information.
And so, that new scorecard will be released for the first time in the fall of next, so August of next year?
August of 2013.
Okay. Second question, when you're reviewing current, so both of them about the teacher evaluation systems, one of the things that you mentioned in the presentation was that one of the supports that the department is offering is the kind of optional review of systems currently in use. What kind of criteria do you use in reviewing them? I mean, what, so as you're reviewing them, what qualifies as a good system? What is a bad, like, what just?
Right.
Yeah, what criteria are you using?
Right. So, this is part of our very quick ramp-up right now to get ready to implement Principle III, but what we anticipate doing, or what we've started to arrange, is that we would review them for things like compliance with current law and what's outlined as coming forward in the future law, or also what US Ed expects to see. US Ed was fairly straightforward in their guidance for Principle III about, "Show us how your evaluation systems will have," and then they have lots of bullets, things like, "How does it connect to professional learning?" So, when we put out the call for send in your systems, it will be structured. Send us your systems and how they address these seven points, and we'll give you feedback on these seven points. Not necessarily, is it a system that does everything in the world, but how does it do on some critical elements? Because there's a lot that goes into these, so we'll give feedback on some targeted elements that align with law and with ESCEA requirements.
So, mostly compliance, kind of a review effectively of how well you're complying with the, if not the letter of, the spirit of the laws that require it?
Compliance will be an important part of it because we want to make sure, we don't want to give district's guidance away from the law. That would be ineffective, but I think we do want to also talk about best practice and best practice as ESCEA application kind of outlined. So, it'll be a balance of, we also don't want to lead districts astray, though, give them feedback on something that maybe is out of sync with where the council is. So, it's just going to have to be a process to get to what can we provide good feedback on, what's necessary areas, and we'll look forward to working with some stakeholders on developing that rubric, I think.
So, the quick follow-up there then is, what kind of capacity do we have to actually determine? determine what makes for best practice in teacher evaluation systems?
I think that's where we will need to draw on things like what, yes, what U S Ed is privileging in the Principal Three guidelines, what the law is privileging, what the best research is saying, but it won't be every piece of best practice. It'll be things like, are you using multiple measures? And how are you using your multiple measures? And how reliable are your multiple measures? Those are, that's kind of a agreed upon thing that we need. We also have been talking with the associations as well about having the review include people external to M D E so that the feedback is more nuanced than just an M D E viewpoint.
And the council, how will that tie in, Joseph?
That will tie in. Essentially, what Vanessa's talking about is making sure that these are also consistent with what has already come out in the council's interim report and what we anticipate will come out in the final report, although we don't know exactly what that will be. So, it's going to have to be more tied into the things that we know are required under the law, things that we know in the research are good, things like multiple measures, things like monitoring interrated reliability, those kind of things. So, it will tie into what the council has done, at least in the interim report.
Okay. Last quick question, really quickly. No follow-ups on this one. I am really interested in hearing about districts that are experimenting with evaluation systems that include a significant amount of peer evaluation. And so, as you learn of districts that are doing that, I just appreciate a heads up. I guess I'd love to spend some time with those folks.
You do that?
Got it. Eileen, please, then Kath, please, and Cassandra, then John.
I don't want to embarrass Lois Lofton Donovan, but I'm going to do it anyway. When I was on the Professional Standards Commission for Teachers, it was the M F T that was the strongest voice for ethics in the classroom, really concerned about making sure that people understood what their roles were. And you didn't mention M F T as a partner in this, but as long as Lois is there and some of the people that I've met, I think that this is something that they believe should be, if they believe that it should happen for a teacher, they're very strong partner. I have a couple of other questions. You're talking about the rigor difference between, actually, you're talking about the increase in rigor. It's not for the curriculum, it's not the curricular rigor, though, because we had about a 90% matchup originally with Common Core with the grade level content expectations. Is it the assessments, what the increased assessment frequency will show, or, you know, exactly what is it that we hope will happen in the classroom that we want to make sure people can be trained for? There's a dangling question, I'm sorry.
Sure. The difference really is in what we would call in the assessment world, the depth of knowledge that we're expecting students to understand. So, it's the same content, but the depth of knowledge, so rather than simply being able to recite the facts, it is, it's more being able to apply them, to analyze, to, so it's increasing the depth at which we would expect students to learn the material, rather than the type of material that they're being asked to learn.
That's really important because in, you know, Common Core right now is a political issue. There's concern about whether it's really a private initiative, whether it's a federal government initiative that's being forced on us. And I'm hoping today to pick our way through that why it is that educationally, we are solidly behind what Common Core can do for Michigan's children. So, that, we touched on it in this presentation about learning across the curriculum, literacy across the curriculum, and the intensity with which, it's just a shift in focus. It's no longer memorization, it's deep learning, which every child needs and parents would welcome, and I think most educators would love to see happen. Is there anything else that you want to say to address that, now that I put you on the spot, Dan? Maybe Lois would want to speak after I put her on the spot.
Well, I do think, I do think that the increase in rigor, the increase in the depth of knowledge that we're expecting students to gain is a significant step forward from where we were with the grade level content expectations and high school content expectations. We had very good sense of what we wanted students to learn. I think this simply says, we want them to learn it to a deeper degree, which is going to, which can't help but be good for the students in the state. I think that's just, you know, something that we really want to trumpet about what we have done in adopting the Common Core.
And then, the last question, thank you. The last question that I have is, what has been the reaction, again, separating out the politicization of whether we should be in Common Core from the educational aspects? I know there's been pushbacks from schools who were stunned if I know that they were a focused school, even though they understood they had an achievement gap. It was a, you know, it's not a comfortable moment for anybody at the moment. But I wondered what kind of reception you've had with this, knowing how much more integral education could be in the school than with what we were able to create under the Michigan curriculum in the past? Are districts, are you getting pushback? Are you getting support? Are people saying, wow, this could really make a difference, now I see what you're doing?
My reaction right, my reaction right now is that it's more neutral. There are some schools that are, some districts that are really, this is what you want, this is what you expect, and others that are, of course, very excited about the potential of where we're headed. And I think this next series that we're proposing will help get it at the teacher level and we'll begin to get a good conversation then. And we can say that we have had very positive feedback on the adoption of the Common Core from our content organizations like Michigan Council for Teachers of Mathematics and Michigan Radio Association and so on.
How, I'm sorry, how reflective are those of the teachers? In other words, the membership organizations?
Teachers.
And are they, do they have pretty good depth of representation of teachers? Are we looking at 30%, that they represent 30% of teachers? Or do they represent 70 or 80%? Is there a chance here that?
I don't know.
You don't know? Okay. Just trying to figure out who's opposing this and what their reasons are, because it's important to know that to try and address it. Thanks.
Kath, Eileen, please, and Cassandra.
Well, I had a couple of follow-up questions to other people's questions. In the evaluation area, the evaluation is supposedly helpful to get teachers to improve their practice. So, that's part of the evaluation, who does the evaluation? If you see the principal or maybe you're at a high school, assistant principals or somebody, and what professional development is there for training them to do evaluations effectively?
That was, that was primarily this first year. I know M A S S P got out and did some trainings, but that is the partnership that we're trying to expand upon with M A S S P and M A I S A and M E A at the present time, to take that to more people. And then, there's also, this comes up later, but there's the money in the budget now for the principal training grants to support districts in being able to pay for some training. So, going into the second year, we hope that the principals will get a lot more support than they experienced the first year, because that was a common concern that we heard from the field.
It's really critical to the whole operation.
And Kath, as a follow-up to that, this was kind of a luck situation where I was at the Ed Alliance meeting when they had a presentation from Charlotte.
Danielson.
Danielson. And that would only be one option, but it prompted me to come back and immediately write the governor and Nixon at almost the last minute that could we get money in for this, which amounted to, I think, in the final analysis, was it?
1.75.
1.75. And so, you know, that's a start. I would, I don't want to miss the opportunity, again, while the Schools of Ed are here. If folks are in the middle of a master's program right now in school administration and aren't getting help in this regard, that's a sin. Those that are training to be principals as we speak, there's a pipeline of thousands of people, and we need to try to adjust quickly, and of course, that's up to them individually, but that's a great opportunity to help a principal right out of the block who's already going through a program. But as you're inferring, this is a catch-up for the 4,000 principals that are already up there, not catch-up, catch-up, but, yeah.
Professional development is one of my, I don't know, it's not, I mean, I'm so concerned about it, it's so long, and it's, you know, we're trying to do it better, I know, it's really important. But I was wondering, what were the seven items in the U S E, U S E D, you know, these criteria? I think I said, I meant to say several. So, they had, yeah. They had, they weren't exactly criteria, they were more like guiding questions, things, when it said guidelines, it would say like, do the guidelines include rigorous measures? And then, they'd have sub-bullets underneath that. So, it was like a thought process that they wanted us to go through and talk about. They didn't necessarily then rate us on every single one, but the, it was the taking together, are the guidelines rigorous? So, there's a lot there about what, it shows their hand in a lot of ways about what U S Ed is expecting to see in guidelines and what they view as best practice, I think, or key elements to a good evaluation system. Okay. And then, what have you talked about with the Common Core, the Career College, Red Standards, working with the administrators? How is it getting to the teachers? I know you've got, you're working with the associations, but following up what Eileen was talking about, how does the, how does it get from the administrators? It should get from the administrators to the teachers, but how do we know that it's getting to the teacher in the classroom?
That was exactly our concern and the reason for developing the webinar series, is that we were concerned about whether or not it was actually getting into the classroom and whether or not teachers understood what was coming. We went to a meeting with, at an M E A convention and had an opportunity to listen to teachers, and it became apparent that they weren't hearing what we had been saying.
That's what I've been hearing all along, and I wonder how we're progressing.
And so, this webinar series, which is intended to be a two-year series, is hopefully going to target all classrooms across the state, focusing first on English Language Arts and Mathematics, and then taking the across the curriculum sorts of issues.
So, is it to the individual teacher to take advantage of the webinar?
Well, the really nice piece of that is that we've got the cooperation and the collaboration of M E A and A F T Michigan. And so, they've also said to us that they'll help us with some of the marketing and some of the work that will need to be done. One of the organizations has agreed to give us a corner in their newsletter so that we'll be able to put information in there, too. And so, we've got a meeting coming up next week with all of these organizations to launch this and have it ready to go with the first one in October, and it'll be ongoing from that point on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kath.
But this explanation was really helpful.
Thank you. Cassandra, please.
Just a quick question. When you talk about the intervention specialists, I'm just wondering how we're tracking the effectiveness of them and if we find that there are some deficiencies, what flexibility do we have to refocus them?
Perfectly good question. And in fact, it was interesting in working with MSU on our ability to hire these people. They are actually on four-month chunk contracts because of the way MSU works their business. And so, we'll be tracking their effectiveness through MSU in that first four-month contract. If things aren't going well, that'll give us a chance to coach and help them. If things aren't going well, we'll be able to pull them out. And because it's more of a net-will contract, we're going to be able to pull them for cause anyway. So, we'll be watching their levels, and MSU's in charge of a monitoring process, they have some rubrics they're putting together, and understand that, like Joseph and Vanessa, we have been running to get things in place. So, some of those are not in final detail yet, but that is one of their charges, is to track these people for their effectiveness.
Good question. John.
Real quickly, thank you for hard work on getting this going, and particularly for getting the supports and help out there, because I know that's always an issue. We have accountability systems and are we providing assistance in helping meet them? But I just, a couple of quick observations, because I just happen to be with bunches of educators as they experience this rollout. First, I think we have a real opportunity to be the leader in the nation with the teacher evaluation process that's going to be unfolding, that's going to be supportive and welcomed by teachers. So, that's an exciting piece of this. I think a lot of the reaction that I saw, anytime we change the framework for accountability, it's change and it brings different schools into target or view for help. And so, that is just a phenomenon that people are experiencing, and it reminds us all, and I hope we can keep one set of targets or one framework in place for a durable length of time, because that is what it takes to align effort to meet those targets and close those gaps. And we need to do our best to try to keep this good framework in place for a while, as long as we can, so that we're not changing the targets. I know that's what I heard from a lot of educators, and I know that's our intention, but just to acknowledge that fact. And the last point is, you know, in return for the flexibility that I think most all educators and others wanted, the, around the proficiency targets and the difficult formula for A Y P, you know, we did embrace, and in return for getting that flexibility, these three new buckets. And the good thing about these three new buckets is we have some acknowledgement of schools that are achieving or achieving better than they, others might. We do have, I just want to reemphasize the point you made, we do have this alignment now. We don't have two competing lists of which schools are the least performing, and we can really focus our effort on the priority schools in a unified way. And, you know, the focus schools give us an opportunity to, in a different way than the complicated A Y P determination of your look at that achievement gap. And that was what we, the deal we made for flexibility, we would have these three new categories, which is consistent with what we do want to focus on and have them be simpler, but also real. And I think, as we discussed, the achievement gap attention we need to make in the state is urgent, real, and I think this system will allow us all to do that, and I appreciate the efforts already underway to focus on delivering support to close that gap.
Great summary of the benefits, John, because I think that can get lost in the change. So, thank you. Richard, please. I'm going, I'm going around to the first folks, if I may, and then I'll come back.
I guess I'm going to throw off my, how I have simplified this in my own mind, and I'm begging you to correct my opinion if I'm wrong. It seems to me that we're basically dealing with gaps, and most of what I hear seems to be addressed to teacher effectiveness. I'm not sure how much of what we're doing or focusing on has to do with school culture shaping the values of the institution, and that would seem to include children and parents as well. And then, another reason why there might be gaps is that some kids come to school who are not prepared to learn, they're lacking something at home, and I don't see anything buried in here that would address that. So, my impression is, is that our approach to these gaps is we're going to try to compensate for whatever other problems may be there in these particular communities by compensatory teacher strategies and practices. Would that be a fair understanding of what we?
I would say that the way that this has been focused is primarily on schools and I would say on teachers and administrators. We'll get to that as we move further into the process. But I think, I don't think it was ever intended that this was going to be the solve everything, because I do think you're absolutely right. The schools are still dealing with students that are coming unprepared, doesn't have components that readily lend themselves to working with communities. But when they go through the school improvement planning process, those are some of the things that they will address. They will talk about the culture of their school. If community engagement is a problem, they will talk about that because that obviously affects what's going on. We would love to see some of them start to address early learning because that really is going to be one of the major keys for them to make the difference with the gap. So, it doesn't get stated explicitly here, Richard, because I think that we're depending on their needs assessments to say, we need more community engagement, we don't have enough parent input, we don't have enough parent involvement in here. And I think, that's when I think a lot of the discussions start to get, start to go around school culture, especially for those schools that start to address their achievement gap. That's going to be one of the major things they'll have to talk about, is what's going on in the culture of the school that's making that gap continue.
And I would add to that. I mean, 20 years ago, I'm a local superintendent with 35 schools, and I'm kind of regularly reminded here at our meeting, and especially with the recent lawsuit that we've been named in, that we are a local control state. So, I didn't even, as a superintendent, expect that of the 17 elementary schools, Elementary School X would have the same thinking in their school improvement work as Elementary School Y. And it's because it might be that our own data, as we're drilling down, I mean, I said this once and almost sounded disrespectful to the department, but I didn't think much about the Department of Ed. I understood, you know, boy, they've got this out here. If I was named, and I think that district has a focused school in there, I'd suddenly be thinking, okay, there we are, let's drill down. But very different strategies, and some of them are exactly what you're getting at. I mean, we can't pretend that a teacher can easily overcome kids who've never been read to or have been exposed to some issues in one community. That can be as different in one school district as it was for me. That can be as different in one school district as it was from A to Z, as different as you could imagine. And so one would hope that, and expect that the principal in that issue, together with the teacher team, would start to work out, what do we need to do in this situation that's different for that group of parents that contribute to this? And it, so I think what's going on right now, and our guys have given appropriate shout-outs to local districts, because we can already see, all of our guys, by the way, volunteered to do this, when I stepped behind, called all the districts and schools the day before and a couple of days before this to try to, and it was, it was very inspiring to hear secondhand how many were ready, and they're, and we're going to do this. And that how many of them understood the uniqueness of their own school situation or their own district versus another. Because I think it, you know, as you know, even part of our achievement gap and our achievement measures are based on growth. There's a factor of growth in there. So you're giving some credit for those that get kids that really aren't kindergarten-ready and helping them get better, and should get credit for that. But ultimately, this is a, this is a much bigger issue, as you're inferring, and teachers are under a tremendous strain, perhaps unfairly in some situations, to speak for things that they can't always control. They can control growth, and, but I appreciate your kind of getting on the table, say, but it gave me a chance to just say, there's 4,000 schools right now, and these are all unique kind of school improvement efforts that vary from as widely as you could imagine. It sounded like you had a follow-up, I'm sorry.
Just to observe then, that, that meeting these goals may not be the, the complete solution. And I guess I consider, I compare it to going to my doctors, and my heart is sound, but maybe my lungs need some work. And just because I've, I've done everything I need to do to take care of my heart doesn't mean that I don't have other things that I, I may, actually may be more pressing need, and that may be true for some of our schools.
Thank you. Nancy, and then Dan, please.
Richard, you, you couldn't have had, offered me a better segue. I think the, the point that Eileen made earlier about the depth of knowledge that we're asking now, instead of the, let me back up a second. I think what we're doing is we're going from exposure to information to mastery of information. And in doing so, I think we start speaking to what Richard was talking about. It is difficult to address the culture in a school if you can somehow rationalize that, well, look at all these things these kids were exposed to. You know, that, we can't do anything more about that, and I'm talking about not just the teachers and the schools themselves, but the parents. But if you now are requiring a mastery of a topic, there's no denying whether or not mastery has taken place or not. And in that lack of denial and that recognition that truly mastery must be the goal, now you have to start dealing with some of those cultural issues in order to have that mastery take place. So I think that this carries us a long way, not just in content mastery, but in recognition of what it is it takes to have mastery even possible. So I, I think this is a, it, it's actually realizing a dream that many of us had back in the 80s and 90s, when I was on a local school board, when we used to say kind of tongue-in-cheek, well, really what we need is every child needs their own IEP, whether they're, whether they're disabled or not. And, and it was tongue-in-cheek, but it was real. And what we are talking about here in terms of evaluation, in terms of college and career ready, in terms of exposure versus mastery, is that personal, personal needs of a child. And so we've come a long way from the 80s and 90s. There are those that would say, we just keep rehashing things. And I would say, no, we just keep perfecting things. So I, I, I think this is really exciting stuff. And I think what, what we are, what will be incumbent upon all of us who have had the opportunity to hear this fine presentation, will be to go to those in districts and schools and parent councils and communities and say, you have an opportunity here, don't pass it up. Jump on it, run with it, take advantage of it, get all four claws into it, and do something with it. So I, I think we can talk both about what you're talking about, Richard, and about the mastery of content that's going to be so critical in order to have culture. Now, to go to a totally different thing, I was wondering, as I went through the agenda today, when I came to the grant criteria of principal, assistant principal training for conducting educator evaluations, it says 2012, 2016, and yet we're just in the pilot of what we believe we know we will have as an evaluation system. How are we able to list grant criteria through 2016 when we don't know what the system is yet? And what kind of flexibility is, are, do we have in place here so that these grants actually adjust as we make improvements, as we find things out, as we, as we say as a result of our pilots, ooh, boy, AQL and J worked really well, but you know what? BC and, and J, or no, I always said J, W, you know, we really need to adjust that. How does that happen here? And I'm asking this only because I don't want to have to have you guys come up again after you sat down, and then have to come up again for this. So you're trying to kill two birds with one stone here.
Yeah, there, there is a, an opportunity for the, the actual application for being able to receive these funds does list the specific, the specific regime for, for doing classroom observations. And that's, that specific application lists the four right now that are being piloted by the, by the MCE, by the Michigan Council on Educator Effectiveness. And as the statewide system is then put in place, it, it, that may be expanded, that may be reduced, but the actual application will be able to, within the bounds of the grant criteria, be able to list the actual ones that are doing well, that the Michigan Council found to work well, or, or the ones that exclude the ones that did not seem to work well. So the grant criteria are, are specific, but flexible enough that we can have the actual programs that will be allowable under that grant to evolve with the work of the council.
Okay. I figured they were, but I just wanted to hear you tell me that. Thank you so much.
You bet.
Good point, Nancy. Thank you. Dan, please.
One other quick question. In a memo that I think I saw, I want to say sadly that it was, might have been from you to a constituent responding to concerns around focused schools, there was some mention of Title I funding and how it could be used by focused, let me, let me back up. So there was a mention of Title I in response to a concern about focused schools. Today's presentation didn't touch on use of Title I funds at all around focused schools. What, if any, relationship, what is the relationship between focused schools and Title I funds?
So for, for the focused schools, all of them are required to follow through with, with making a difference. We're able through, for those that are Title I funded, to provide the, the 50 hours and that sort of thing. A non-Title I funded school could purchase those supports with their Title II dollars.
I'm sorry, focus?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Same, same, same application, same thing.
Okay. Kath, please.
What, we've been focusing on the rigor, and I don't want to forget the relationships and the, and the development, and being used to make rigor possible. I don't know if that's included in any of, any of the training or whatever, professional development, but I think it's really important that we're ready to do this, because there's more than one of-
Correct. And I think you'll see that come out in the, in the webinar series.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Good questions, good interaction, and I, I don't have to do this, I think it's self-evident, but we're lucky to have the four people at the end of the table, and they, to say the least, dedicated their whole summer, canceled vacations, all kinds of stuff to, to do this. So appreciate that very much, I want to say that publicly. And then three of you still have more duty now on item B. So, thank you, Linda. And we're going to head right into a presentation on accountability results from the 2011-12 school year. As you can see, we've dovetailed this because of its, the logic.